As you're able, please stand for the flag pleads. Flag pleads.
To the flag of the United States of America. Into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for acquiring a flag for us, too.
Okay, so our discussion item this evening is future county and capital school planning. We have three presentations this evening, so we've got three parts to the story. We're gonna start with the county presenting right on our capital improvement program, then we'll move to the schools presenting on theirs, and we'll finish with Courtney Rogers from Davenport Company, who gives us the debt capacity financial piece. So we're gonna gather all three pieces together, and then, once we have all the information, we'll take questions after the end of the presentations. That way, we can get through everything, and everybody can have the same information. Mark, if you wanna get us started, I know you have handouts for everybody, so. We can help you tap me around. Does anybody need a pen? We brought extras of those, too.
You're good down here.
Steve, please, a pen.
I do need those, too.
If Derek was here, he'd need them. Please, I'll dig around my purse somewhere.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this was a presentation that I presented to the board supervisors on June 9th, about the county's capital improvement program. And so what I did was, I started off by talking about some background information about the CIP. Basically, the CIP is a multi-year spending plan for the construction of major capital infrastructure. And when you think about the CIP, really, it's a living document, meaning that the CIP changes as priorities change, not only at the board level, but as projects change. And that can be a change in scope on the project, or it could be a change in cost. In order to qualify, projects must have a useful life of five years or more, and cost over a specific dollar amount. For Montgomery County, that dollar amount is $50,000. Now, while we say $50,000, generally speaking, in order to get something into the CIP, it's generally in the millions of dollars, but technically, to qualify, it needs to be at least $50,000. Capital projects differ from capital outlay, items that are in your operating budget, based on useful life and overall cost. Capital projects are bigger in scope. Capital outlay items generally have a useful life of about one year, and they're generally part of the county's routine operating budget. And then, a formal CIP is linked to the operating budget, and serves as a forecast of future operating expenditures. And I've always said this in the past, and that is, nothing will squeeze an operating budget like a CIP, because you don't go out and build brand-new infrastructure, and then not fund the operating costs associated with that infrastructure. And those operating costs include debt service costs, facility costs, program costs. And then, to give an example, this year, the magistrate and court services building is expected to be complete. Right now, it's substantially complete. So the fiscal year 26 operating budget included $45,000 for maintenance and utility costs associated with that new building, and then a new housekeeper for the added square footage. Talk a little bit about the financing of capital projects. There are two primary methods for financing capital infrastructure. Those are debt proceeds and cash to capital. Debt proceeds are the sale of bonds. The types of bonds that can be sold are either general obligation bonds or revenue bonds. General obligation bonds are backed by the full faith and taxing authorities of jurisdiction, and carries the lowest interest rate. But in order to issue those, you have to have a voter referendum. Revenue bonds are backed by revenue agencies, generally a lease payment through a third party, and at the end of the lease, the county will receive the property. Generally, when we issue debt, we issue revenue bonds. Cash to capital are direct contributions for capital projects, and they can be transfers from the general fund or other funds, or they can be grants. The county's fiscal year '26 to '30 CIP includes debt proceeds, cash to capital, and ARPA funds. Talk a little bit about the annual general fund transfers. So, we have five cents of the real estate tax rate that is earmarked for county and school capital needs every year. The county has two and a half cents, and the schools has two and a half cents. For the county's two and a half, one and a half cents is earmarked for fire and rescue capital equipment, and then one cent is earmarked for future county capital projects. And that includes $100,000 for the Valley-to-Valley Trail project. For the schools, two and a half cents. The two and a half cents is earmarked for future school capital needs, and these funds may, can only, they can only be used with future board of supervisor programs. Each year, as the penny value on the real estate rate changes, because the real estate values increase, that additional penny value gets added to the CIP. The CIP for fiscal year '26 to '30 factors in an increase of $49,000 per year in each year of the CIP. Talk about some other annual general fund transfers. So 1.3 million is included in the county capital budget to provide an ongoing source of capital maintenance funding to cover the county's existing buildings and infrastructure. And basically, this is a proactive program of preventative maintenance designed to address major repairs, and will replace large-scale components that cannot be addressed within the county's centralized maintenance program in the operating budget. Really, the purpose of this program is to invest in existing capital assets to maintain the county's building and infrastructures, and to extend their useful life. Ongoing projects include roof replacements, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning upgrades, carpeting, paving, and other major systems upgrades. Additional $425,000 is included for parks and rec projects. And some examples include the Huckleberry Bridge repairs, updating lights at the Motor Mile Park, and pool repairs at the Frogmont. And then, we have $210,000 annually for information technology infrastructure projects, and that would include servers and other major hardware items on an as-needed basis. Talk a little bit about our existing projects. So we have the magistrate and court services building. Cost estimate on that is 8.1 million. Again, that's, project is substantially complete. Seal Park built out, we're near completion on that, $13 million. Falling Branch Corporate Park Phase 2, that project is in progress, and it's estimated at $8 million. Elston Fire Department, we're in the design phase on that project. Estimated cost is $12 million. Cinnabar Green Space and Storage, we're in the planning phase on that project. Total estimated cost is $2.4 million. And then, the Christiansburg Library. Again, we're on the planning phase on that project, and the estimated cost is $16.1 million. New projects for fiscal year '26 to '30. Includes 201 Rapper Street, which is gonna be the new home of the extension office. That project is in progress. Estimated cost right now is $2.1 million. 305 Roanoke Street, which is going to be the new home of career fire and EMS. That project is in progress. Estimated cost is $5.5 million. Radio infrastructure project is in progress. Estimated cost is right at $10 million. And then, we have Government Center Improvement Phase 2. Construction is estimated to begin in fiscal year '27. Total estimated cost is $4.1 million. And the Government Center Generator Project. Construction is estimated to begin in fiscal year '29. Total estimated cost is around $5 million. And that was my presentation from June 9th. That's all I had to say.
Do you have a presentation preloaded up there for you to talk?
I believe we do. All right, good evening everyone. We're just gonna go over a couple of things that we have planned for our, to present to you what our capital improvement plan is, and the projects that we wanna work on. Wanted to go over a couple of things first, before we actually do that. I thought it'd be nice to share with the board supervisors, and what's our goal, what are we trying to do, and looking back at what was already done. So if you look at a couple of the primary schools in Christiansburg, elementary schools. Christiansburg Primary is a primary, primary example. What we did, and we renovated a space that was similar to some of the schools in Blacksburg that warrant renovation. So if you look at that school now, and I know many of the board supervisors are here. We toured that when we had the ribbon cutting a few years ago. Then, it was that open classroom space model that we have in some of our schools now, and now they're individual classroom spaces. And it's, that's the old look. You know, and the picture's not as large as, I love the cow picture, but. It's wide open concept, like if you went to Harding Avenue Elementary School. You have numerous classes in the same space, separated by those dividers, and you could see this, how those dividers look, what the classrooms look, the floors, the ceilings. You know, just antiquated and looks to be updated. So, did the work. And the final project is all individual classrooms, individual doors for safety. But if you walk that building, at Christiansburg Primary School, it looks as if it was a brand-new building. And that's something that we're all very proud of, and we're able to get accomplished at the same time as we did the two other elementary schools. And Christiansburg Elementary, very similar. If you look at some of the wood there, I know the picture's not that large, but that's similar to the buildings, the three elementaries in Blacksburg. When you look at Margaret Beeks Elementary, Gilbert Linkus, and Harding, they have those same corridors for the primary wing. There's no real doors separating. And it's got that wood that was from when the buildings were built. Just not an environment where you would want your children to learn. And then, the product after renovation looks like it's brand-new. Brand-new building, classrooms are bright, spaces are conducive to learning, and for teachers to work in. Absolutely fabulous. Christiansburg High School, just wanted to give you a little look on that. Videos aren't in here. Y'all don't use Canva? 2025. That's not what we wanted. Is it still open or not?
Did it open in Chrome?
No, it was on the edge before. All right, I'm not gonna waste your time. We had a video that did the fly-through that we already showed for Christiansburg High School, and how we're excited about what that project is taking place. And there was a little video walking around. Bring that back to you again, I don't wanna waste everyone's time. That fly-through video was really exciting for us. That was like a 3D model that the architect put together, and you got to see what the classrooms and large area spaces would look like. Now that it's starting to come to fruition, you can actually see it in place. It's really pretty neat. And I know, we're still working on a date, but we were planning with the architect to have a ribbon cutting for that. So, because in August, when the kids go back to school, they're gonna be in the new wing, while they're renovating the other wing, and going back and forth. So it's really pretty exciting to see what's taking place there. My apologies, I, I, you know, they told me it was set up, but. This little thing right here. We have a new director of facilities, he's coming on tomorrow, actually, July 1st. And one of the things we wanna have him do is go over all the infrastructure in all the buildings. The HVAC, the roofs, the lighting, the electricity, the water, the plumbing. Because as you know, in your own home, there's a shelf light for all of that. And this is small, but I just wanted to include it. This needs to be updated, it's a few years old. But if you look at the top three schools there, and all the stuff that's in the red that's checked off, those are the buildings we're looking to renovate. Three elementary schools up on Blacksburg, Montgomery Central, and as well Shawsville Middle School. You know, Shawsville Middle School was built in 1935. And I know there was some renovation done at some other point, but it's time. Montgomery Central was about the same time as well. So that should bring me to... And this was the presentation I would share with our school board. Our school board looked at a couple of iterations of this. This was a project that took probably 18 months to put together, from the time we started talking about what we need to do, gathering information from our community members, and seeing what was that they wanted. You know, when we first looked at Harding Avenue Elementary School, for example, if you ask Bernie Brigant, I don't think that wide-open model would work for someone as ADD like I do. But it wasn't about what I wanted to do, and the board was very directive, and find out what the community members want, find out what the teachers want, find out what the parents and the community want. So this final project, final product, was an iteration of all that, okay? So basically, the five schools that we're looking on, that we feel, as a school board, are the most in need of intention, are Harding Avenue Elementary School, Gilbert Linkus Elementary, Margaret Beeks Elementary, Montgomery Central, and Shawsville Middle Schools. And when we looked at the timeframe on how we wanted to do that, and what it would cost, grouped it together into two phases. The first phase would be like we did here with Bellevue Elementary, Christiansburg Primary, Christiansburg Elementary, kinda working those simultaneously. And in talking with the architect, he assured us that, you know, outside of the financing with the building perspective and the planning and all, that could be done. They could all be done at the same time. And then, the second phase would be to focus on Shawsville Middle School and Montgomery Central. We did a demographic study two years ago. I forget when we did it, and projected enrollments out till the 10-year window from there. And our enrollment is slightly declining. It's gonna level off after about year seven or eight. And what that means for us is a couple of things. One is that none of the schools that we were concerned about, like if you look at developments out in Blacksburg, up at Price's Fork, Blacksburg Middle School, Blacksburg High School, hey, are they gonna be at capacity soon? Are we gonna be coming back to y'all with, hey, we need another whatever amount of money to deal with those? That's not the case. When we checked out what the building was, and the number of children that are anticipated to be in those homes, significantly less from when I grew up, and even from 10 years ago, when builders would project how that would impact the community. So our enrollment is somewhat stable, and it's not gonna put us at capacity, overcapacity for any of these buildings. So when we do these projects, at least for the next 10 years, with one exception that I'll get to at the end, we don't anticipate having to come back and say, oh wow, you know what now? This school is so overcrowded, we have to deal with that first. The price is really ridiculous. You know, I remember when I first got into this game, it was about $95 a square foot for a finished product at a, you know, middle grade kind of thing. Just in the last couple of years, it's gone up from around $250 to $500. And that's the cost, that's what our architect projects that's gonna be. And you all know, when you were doing any kind of building during COVID, we just saw that escalation begin. And from what they tell me, again, I'm not in this space, I don't know exactly how much it costs. But, you know, we're looking at now, $509 a square foot, finished product. All right, the first school is Harding Avenue Elementary School. And basically, what we wanna do there is recommend a total renovation, to make that similar to the buildings in the schools that we have at Christiansburg. It's the footprint there, and these are the specifics, you know, and the cost range from low to high. Sorry for that to read, but I know we got that separated out. Getting rid of the modular space and doing all the renovations there, again, to make those individual classrooms. One of the things that the teachers and the community spoke strongly about was, in all, in all of these buildings, is safety and security. When you got a wide-open space, you can't lock the door. You can't do a lockdown when there's 11 classrooms in the same space. And even in the primary wings, where there are individual classrooms, they share a corridor all the way down, that do not have any doors. Gilbert Linkus, you know, off of Tom's Creek Road there, similar renovations. These schools were all built at the same time. Want to enlarge some of the classroom spaces, bring it up to date. And, you know, if you walk Gilbert Linkus and you look at that building, it looks like it was built in the 1960s. It's got the same tiles on the wall, the same roof ceiling tiles, the same lighting structures, the same, the same floor tiles. And unfortunately, some of the same A-track and things like that, that are really antiquated. The footprint there. Margaret Beeks, the same type of thing, same, same, same time of construction. And each of these projects is a little bit of specificity that's really different. But overall, it's to completely renovate those buildings in the same manner that we did for the three elementaries in Christiansburg. Shawsville Middle School, as I said, 1935 or thereabouts it was built. Absolutely needs some TLC, needs some updating, infrastructure. There's another thing that's going down in Shawsville. You all know that the board wanted us to put this proposal out there with, the first option is to renovate the current space. But if that building ever gets approved, and I don't know where that is, or where you all with that, father and gay, father and gay farm property. You know, the initial proposal, you all know, was 409 houses or something that we projected that would impact the school, people over 300 kids. I don't know where that's gonna wind up, or how many houses are actually gonna be there. But that may determine the Shawsville Middle School. Because Shawsville Middle School is one of the schools, if all those students wind up coming to school, it would be overcapacity. The elementary school can handle that capacity, and the high schools are right around that, right around that capacity if all that housing takes place, and those kids do show up. So when and if we get to that point with Shawsville Middle School, the housing development could definitely impact on what plan would be most appropriate to go with. So that's just, that's the renovation part there. And Montgomery Central. You can just look at those pictures there and see how, how antiquated that is. You know, one of the things this board has done this year with some of those capital monies that we get on an annual basis for upgrading was the new windows. And that's making a huge impact, just not only on the appearance, but the, the R-factor in the building, you know, the weathering of the building. So literally, there were some of the classrooms that had breezes coming through, and the windows were closed. Right, so that's not gonna happen anymore. And again, if the building takes place as it may or may not happen down in Elston, Shawsville, and you all know that better than us, it may necessitate a new building there to meet that capacity.
I think we can show your fly-throughs.
Say it one more time?
I think we can show the video.
I think, well, I think, if you don't mind, one more second. Sorry, I'm gonna make a tiny turnaround, and just use that machine.
It was open when I came up here.
I know, I don't know what happened. Well, I'll get the first one going, and then we'll get the second one going. How about that? This is tiny turnaround, it'll work. Let's just do it a bit well.
You did have it set up, it was open. I'm not blaming anybody, but you know, the gathering form, I think it's done.
Oh, it's in picture? Okay.
That really makes a lot of sense. It should be right, because she's both of them.
Bernie, can you send your presentation to Angie, so she can send it out to her work?
I can have it.
Oh, okay, good.
That doesn't work, we can do this. How do you do that? Well, I just try to make it turn.
You're the best. I don't care what Angie says. All right, so this one here, I, I think this is neat, and I think it's worth y'all seeing, the dedicated monies that you set aside for Christiansburg High School. And when we take the tour, when we do the ribbon cutting, it's amazing to see how it actually really does look like this. Cafeteria space is wide open, the windows are absolutely gorgeous. I'm not sure the gold is actually the right color, we're working on that. It looks a little like Blacksburg yellow, just saying. Blue's not as navy as it should be, but that's. But this space now, and it's almost done, that, that area, it actually looks as good as it does in my life. Things don't usually work out the way people tell you they're gonna. That open stairway is really nice as well. And one of the things they did was in the, it's actually not in the picture. It's better in real life is, what they did were those luxury vinyl tiles on the floor, they're actually terraza. So it's much more, it looks much prettier, and it's gonna maintain a lot longer than it would be if it was the tile. That's our Christiansburg Institute information. We're working with Chris Sanchez and his team over there to make sure we adequately provide the space for those artifacts to be in a climate-controlled environment and all that stuff. All right, so you get the idea? I don't want you to watch the whole thing, unless you, unless you wanna watch the whole thing, it's six minutes. Yeah, you got the idea. So now, I'm gonna show you the, if I can do this without messing it up. This is where it is now. Wanted to share that, because we appreciate it, and I can't wait for y'all to tour that in August. It's really exciting, that even for me, in the short time that I've been here for three years, that we've been talking about this. I know people have been talking about it a lot longer, but it's actually there. You know, and it's gonna be quite exciting to see. No questions, all right, to the end?
Oh yeah, we're gonna have Courtney go, and then we'll do.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. I'm gonna start out. So, this has been about 18 months since we last talked. So, I'm gonna cover two things tonight. First is gonna be debt capacity, which is basically, think of it as the credit card limit. And then, the second part of the presentation, we're gonna talk about debt affordability, which is, how do we pay that debt back? And so, first, we're gonna cover the debt capacity side. As we talk to the rate agencies, we look at the entire debt of the county, both schools and the general government side. Currently, about $172 million of debt outstanding as we start the next fiscal year, tomorrow. There are two key debt ratios. The first one is outstanding debt, that's that 172, divided by the assessed value of personal and real of the county. That's one of the ratios the agencies look at. That's one of the ratios the agencies look at. We have a policy of three percent and four percent on the, on the high side. We're in great shape there at just under one hundred and fifty, one point five percent. To give you a sense of how we compare to others, these are Moody's medians. Um, the green is the triple A's, the other double A ones in the state, and then Z Monary at the top. This is at, using uh twenty twenty-four data, you can see that um, we're kind of out here on the end, far as the other triple A's, and uh, sort of in the middle, I guess, if you wanna call it that, with the other double A's. The other ratio is debt service divided by expenditure. So this is the annual amount of debt service that we're paying on all debt, divided by the budget, the county budget as well as the school budget. And so when you look at, um, you'll see in a moment, right now, we're at ten percent, but using this chart, we're actually as, as the budget has gone up and debt service has come down, we actually have come down off the ten percent high, that you'll see on the next chart. We're uh, we're right there, I'll call it just a little bit below nine percent as of FY twenty-six. It's still well below our policies. Again, doing this comparison, you'll see, yes, we're at ten percent, this again is as of twenty-four, but we've come down. But even then, when we take that snapshot of all the other triple A's, the other double A ones, we're actually, we're out there when it comes to uh the debt service as a percentage of expenditures. So it's no surprise that that is, of the two, that's our limiting factor when it comes to the debt capacity. So debt service to expenditures limits us the most of the two. So if we just use a s- uh, five percent interest rate and assume a twenty-year level debt service borrowing, to get to that twelve percent debt service to expenditure limit, we could go out today and borrow a hundred million dollars. And then as debt service declines, again, and the expenditures grow, we can pick up some more capacities, we go through time, over the next ten years. So a hundred and seventy-four million in the first five years and a hundred and twenty-six in the next five. And again, we're using two percent growth on the budget side, and we're taking the exact debt service as it comes down over the, um, over the next several years. So from a credit card perspective, we've got the ability to take on some additional debt. So now I'm gonna switch from that credit card limit side, the capacity, and go again to affordability. So if we go out and borrow that, how are we gonna pay it back? Just to give you a sense of what it costs in terms of, we used ten million for just a moment. Ten million dollars borrowing today over twenty years at five percent, it's gonna roughly take eight hundred thousand dollars a year to pay it back. That's to pay back the principal and interest advertised over twenty years, double debt service, five percent. So that's every ten million dollars. So if we borrow a hundred million, we're gonna, we're gonna need ten times that amount. Now let's go back to the existing debt. So we're gonna divide it up between general government and school debt. The general government, as they pay down their debt, they basically roll those dollars into pay-go projects. Mark talked about some of the projects that they had coming up in their CIP. So they're, they, they either are gonna use it for debt service, or what they've been doing lately, cause we haven't borrowed in a while, is taking that money and actually paying cash for some of those projects. So then when we look at your side, the school side, I'll say, over here, at nineteen point six million and declining, we're gonna take a little bit closer look at that, since we're talking about school projects tonight. So I wanna break this down a bit further. Of that nineteen million or so of revenues that are coming in, seventeen point eight are coming from the general fund. There's some other sources, it's a combination of some federal subsidies from some old programs that the federal government had. Those go away in these couple of years. Then there's some energy savings that you all undertook. Some of those go away in these two years, and the remaining pays out um, over the last several years. So between those two, this is the total revenues that are currently coming in. When we look at the debt service, the other costs are gonna be administrative costs, such as when we issue debt, we have trustee fees, things like that. The total expenditures, we do have a gap, that's the red there. The gap though, has been funded, the school has, I'm sorry, the county has previously transferred over to the school fund some dollars to be used. So that's already paid for, that's taken care of, it's pre-planned. So think of it as, the money's already in the bank, these really are zeros. So when we look at what's available for potentially new debt, we just talked about, we have the credit card limit for it, how do we pay that debt back? These are the dollars we have. So million three, three point two, four point five, the big number really starts here in twenty thirty-three. You see that graphically? That's where the big, the big revenues come in or are available to repurpose, go back to paying debt service. That's what we're seeing right here. So if we take that eight million dollars there, by our calculations of using uh five percent twenty years, we basically can fund a hundred and eight million of debt in twenty thirty-three without having to find a dollar ahead of that. So when we look at your projects, we, given this, the, the low and the high cost estimates, we use the high, just to be conservative tonight, um, to show, um, what if it can take it done. We've, we've noticed, we just got this last Monday, and we noticed we have a typo, we actually copied this line twice. So we're more conservative tonight, showing you can actually issue a little bit more debt later on. But when you go back to that, this graphic, you know, phase one is basically taken care of here, phase two really gets taken care of out here. Because we're gonna need that extra dropdown. And so we not only can, uh, we can fund not only what you've got in your plans, but maybe a little bit more. So again, our, our assumptions are that the phase one, the ninety-two million, basically can be taken care of in the fall of thirty-one. And so this is cash flow I showing you the existing debt. This is that phase one, phase two. Again, phase one, the main principal time, principal interest comes due in twenty thirty-three. We basically will be able to pay for some interest in twenty thirty-two. So again, we've assumed that we can do this in the fall of thirty-one. It affects physical thirty-two on a partial basis, with the most of the full principal interest coming due in fiscal thirty-three. And so what happens is, as you can see, this is the tight spot, six hundred thousand. That's the tight spot, and then the next one, of course, for phase two is down here, um, at twenty forty-two. So graphically, graphically, you can see, we've got a little bit of gap here and here, but not enough to pay for that full ye- that full uh, or a partial year of interest, it's just not big enough there. We, we, we would, we could do it a year earlier. It's not huge dollars, maybe a hundred thousand dollars in extra interest. So if you had additional dollars, we could move all this up one year. But what you'll see there is that that takes, basically those dollars are coming from the general fund, you won't need additional dollars to be able to take care of both phase one and phase two on this timeline. Just kind of circling all the way back to the debt capacity side, you can see we're in great shape on the debt to assessed value. We're in really good shape here, still kind of where we are now, uh, at eight percent goes all the way down here to around six percent out there in twenty thirty-three. So we're in pretty good shape here on both those ratios in that standpoint. With that, turn back over to.
Alright, thank you Courtney. So I guess let's open the floor for questions about the presentations, comments, et cetera. Who would like to go first? Supervisor man?
Um, Courtney, if you can get back up there.
Yeah, I was just sitting there, I'm like, maybe I should stay up.
Yeah. Uh, slide seven. And this is for the county also. Uh, the second bullet, uh, what is generally what our annual, um, the two percent on the second bullet?
Oh, which, I'm sorry, which page are you on?
Is that what we usually experience, a two percent?
No, it's just, it's a rule of thumb we've used for years, uh, not only you, but others as well. I mean, it's, it's obviously dependent upon needs, um, inflation.
Mm-hmm. What has it been? Anybody have any idea?
It's about three percent.
Which is fifty percent more. Right, okay.
It doesn't have a huge impact on this portion, because.
It doesn't?
Well, yeah, cause this is saying, this is saying credit card limit. You know, we're not, you know, there's plenty of room to issue what they're, what, what the schools are looking for, it's really paying it back, that's the, that's where the goal is at. That's really the trick, is coming up with the additional dollars.
And then.
And that usually is, frankly, that's what most local governments struggle with, is there's a, you know, with, especially with inflation, the cost of all these projects have been going up and up, and uh, you get them out and they go up even more. So it's, it's really finding the dollars to repay.
Mm-hmm. Um, so slide twelve. Just trying to understand what that blue line is.
The blue line, I'm gonna go back, the blue line is this blue box. It's the total revenues that are coming over to pay for debt service, that are basically programmed, think of it that way, that Mark and his team on the budget side have pre-programmed how much there needs to be for the debt service. So that line kind of comes down as those, um, the QSCAP federal dollars come off, as well as the um,
Energy savings.
Energy savings, thank you. Um, and then you give down to basically that seventeen points eight million that's coming here from the general fund.
And the reason that that uh, blue line is below the third bar is because of those dollars we had set aside?
That numbers, uh, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's basically the monies that are already segregated and set aside.
But those blue numbers would change if we take on more debt, right? So, yeah.
That's the trick, is if you wanna take on more debt, you're gonna need more revenues.
Do we have a graph that shows? Yeah, does, do we have a graph or a chart that shows if we took on the extra debt? What the blue numbers would be?
This is the debt service there on page sixteen. So you're looking at about seven point four million, um, out here in twenty thirty-three. If you decided you wanted it today, essentially you've gotta find seven point four million on top of what's already in the budget.
And uh, according to the last ten years, considering that COVID was right in the middle of it, how does our revenue go up? It's gone up pretty significantly.
It has gone up, but we would have to, the board would have to decide to use that for the debt service.
Right, right. But it, it's getting to be a less percentage the larger that the budget is. Right?
Well, as the budget grows, seven million is less, is a smaller percentage.
Yeah, less percentage, right.
That's in fact, yes.
And um, and where's the limit for percent, it didn't look like we were even remotely close to the.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't too much.
Right, as far as the debt service to expenditures, we're in good shape here.
Yep, yep. That's all I have.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Questions, anyone else?
So, do, looking at that, uh, that projected debt service fund budget, through slide eleven, so then, I guess, at first pass, to me, waiting until twenty thirty-three, or twenty thirty-one, whatever, for some of these projects, seems like way out there and maybe too long. And so then, are we saying, we, like, the county would have, we would somehow have to come up with another eight million dollars a year-ish in contributions to debt service, right?
That's right.
Between now and twenty thirty-three?
Yeah, and, and basically, we, we did fifty basis points, or a hundred basis points, sorry, over the current market, we're.
Yeah.
Right at four percent, a little, maybe a little above that, or I don't.
At least, it would be at least eight million in the, those first four years, and then it would start to taper off.
Right. Just say seven and a half million.
Yeah.
Of debt service at five percent, um, for those projects.
Courtney, can you talk about if we use that, that same structure and didn't do an interest-only payment, but we issued one year earlier?
Yeah, let's go. Yeah, so if we, if we went one year earlier, so we moved this here, we've got, we're just over the blue line just a little bit.
Yeah.
So I think it was about a hundred thousand, probably.
But it was, so if you remember in the past, sometimes, which Courtney talked about, those red numbers, we funded the beginning of the debt with one-time money to get those first years shaved the peak, that's right.
Shaved the peak, yeah.
So if we moved it up one year, and that's all we did was put some money aside to shave the peak, I think it's about three point six million dollars that we would need to do that, is it?
It's closer, it, it's closer to like a hundred thousand, actually.
Yeah, the way, when we researched.
To shave the peak?
Yeah, a hundred thousand.
To save the peak down below the blue line.
So we could do, so we could issue a year earlier?
Yeah.
So essentially, it's issue in twenty thirty. See, we did, so we didn't put principal here. So rather than go for a full seven point four million.
But if, that, so what they're talking about is if we did some interest only, but if we did it with the full interest and principal, I think we could do it for.
You got some principal, for instance? There's a little bit of principal.
Okay.
It's not fully interest-only in twenty thirty-two.
So, without getting too in the weeds on it, there is a possibility of doing it a year earlier?
There's some tech, we. It could be.
Yeah, if you buy your car, if you go buy your car, they, they usually don't say, hey, how do you want your payments? But we have a little bit of flexibility in saying, we're not gonna start amortizing our principal immediately, and so what we did here was, just to see if we could move it up a little bit. We did pay a full year's amortization in year one, it was just partial, to try to stay below that line. And so this would basically mean we'd be issuing in twenty thirty, fall of twenty thirty, right, fall of twenty thirty. First interest would be in twenty thirty-one, that would be the first payment, partial. And then twenty thirty-two would be not a full seven point four million, now it's four point six. But what it means is that it goes up to seven point six for all the later years, cause we're pushing principal out and then spreading it out over the final nineteen years at that point. So there's ways of moving it up, call it two years.
We have analyzed this based on phase one, phase two, from the school board, um, there's no county projects involved.
Oh, that's right, and this is just, we're just looking at the school side of the cash flow ledger.
And right now, because the county isn't using all of our debt service funds for debt service, if this, if we decided to issue some debt with the, with the schools, we would have capacity to pay for that at this point. Because we're, we are using it for capital, but we're maintaining it in the budget year after year, so that when we do issue debt, we'll have debt service funds available.
If we needed to, too, for that one year, could we use some of that two and a half cents?
Yes.
Can you, um, just very, I, I feel like I ask you this every time we meet, but can you briefly address, um, the bond rating and why it is important to the cost of the debt? And since I know we're double A plus, double A one?
Double, double A plus, double A one, double A plus, right.
Um, and then the best is triple A.
Right, we're just, we're just off the.
We're not there. At all, at all.
Right.
But can you just?
Not necessarily.
Right, yeah, and, and, and right now, with rates, you know, I mean, if you think, if you take away the COVID years, we're really still around forty-year lows. Um, I mean, at four percent for twenty-year money, still pretty good, pretty good rates. Everybody keeps hearing rates are highs, yeah, if you go out and borrow for a new home, at seven percent, that is pretty, pretty high for what we've been experiencing over the last ten years or so. But from a taxes end standpoint, actually rates are still pretty good for borrowing. The reason the rating is important, um, outside of the financing side, is there's economic development reasons. But that, but really for what we're here tonight, in terms of what, if, if we got downgraded, what does that do to our borrowing costs? So maybe instead of four percent, we're, we're borrowing now four and a quarter, or four and a half percent, that's the real difference is. Um, and right now, when writ, there, there, the market right now, nobody's really that nervous about things, but when people get nervous, there's a flight to quality. So right now, the spread may not be much between triple A and where we are at double A one, where if we were at double A minus. But when there's a flight to quality is when that gap gets really big, and people want the higher rated, um, better credits. So that's where, that's where it really pays off, to have that, the better rating.
If you have any questions, Courtney?
Uh, well, I mean.
The whole thing, sorry.
I just go back to my earlier comment, that so i- i- if we relit phase one, like, how quickly could we even get? I mean, is, is twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one, is that, when that would even start, it could start earlier if we had money sooner, so.
Soon we have money, soon we can start.
Yeah.
So it's gonna cost approximately ninety-five million to do those three. So it's gonna cost approximately ninety-five million to do those three buildings in phase one. So how much will we be able to borrow? Be able to borrow that much to get those three started? And it took Christiansburg project about two years to finish up. Where are we at?
Did you repeat the beginning of the question?
Sorry, we're talking, sorry, Mr. President.
How long it took to finish the high school?
Three elementary.
It was two years.
Yeah, two years.
Yeah, so two, two years, starts period, we're, we sure got a zonate too, so we're probably looking at
Right.
six, twelve months, six months, sorry.
Yeah, the initial presentation from our architect, he just kind of floated in, you know, the one-year designs, that'd be done twenty-six, two-year construction, twenty-eight. We didn't wanna, we didn't wanna assume that. Obviously, as a part of our plan, we had those dates come out, that that was originally.
Sure. Yeah, so they point you out before you have these in hand to probably break ground.
Could you do the one, like, I mean, I know, like, we had it all lumped together when we did the three schools, but Fallen Branch was a part of that. But we had extra money, so we went ahead and started Fallen Branch and did that renovation prior to the other three. So I mean, is that an option in order to speed it up a little bit, to do them not together, but in row?
We, we can borrow one at a time, but I'm not an engineer, so I don't know that.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about building, I'm just talking about money capacity. I mean, is that something that?
We're sorry to find the dollars to pay for it, sorry, I I have a suggestion, I could, I'm not avoiding your question, I would, I would.
Okay. There you go.
Mark, I'll put you on the spot, what's one percent sales tax?
One percent sales tax, how much would it generate?
Just what they generate, you know, ballpark.
Um.
Well, apologies here.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure that out now.
While you're thinking about it, um I think I mentioned this, um we were February of twenty-four, and you might remember that it was just sort of a, a, just being bannered about, and that is a one percent sales tax to be able to use for school projects, right? Was, the governor killed it last year, killed it again this year. But if a certain party gets into office this year, really, what we're hearing through our lobbyists is a really good chance that that will be, that will be a green light this time next year.
Eighteen million.
Now, you still have to go to referendum, the people had to vote for it, right?
Ish.
One percent of the sales tax is eighteen million?
That's the state level.
That's what the county would get for.
What do you think? Eight, eighteen million?
Yeah.
Pay for a lot of schools.
Another thing to consider is, uh, we have funds from the Christiansburg High School interest that we earned, that we've talked to you about before, and that's accumulating, we're um the actuaries are calculating how much we're gonna have to pay back in the arbitrage calculation, but it's it's over six million dollars. I don't know the exact amount at this point, but that.
That's the, that's the gross, yeah.
Yeah. No, the gross is more than that.
Okay.
So that, those funds would be available to maybe get started with projects too.
Yeah. So I could help fund architects, things like that, as your, as a, as a senior.
Yeah, one of the challenges that I've been grappling with with Elise, when the architect presented the range of costs, you know, part of that was to account for inflation, but those costs were only projected out five years, um so after five years,
That's right.
I know, right, and you know, costs haven't gone down in a while, but.
So, was to try and avoid your question, so we'll come back to it, that's, that's still good.
So just so I understand, that let's say the sales tax revenue thing goes through, that would be eighteen million dollars a year?
Available, it has to.
That would fund a lot, that would fund a lot of it.
It requires a referendum, locals.
It requires a referendum, it does require referendum, so you think, if it were, let's just say, got signed next May, you could have a referendum in November, and then, I don't know what the timing of collecting and starting, but um.
But if administrations change, it could, you take it away, right?
No, I, my understanding is, if it gets signed into law and it gets passed for referendum, it's there, and I I don't remember what the uh, I don't know if it's, if there's a sunset or if it's tied to debt, I can't remember that part. Um I have to dig into that part, I don't know if it can be, I honestly don't know if it can be used for Pago, if it has to be debt. I I think it's available for both, but I don't quote on that one. That has changed, it has more.
And it's only um collected if there's actual debt to pay for, or is it just collected always?
That's a great question, I don't know.
We'll look at the back.
Yeah, I don't like the answer. That, that, and that's kind of where I was going, I don't know if it's available for Pago
Do you have?
or if it is like you think, like, okay, we got seven point, let's say we do the seven point four million debt service, and you only like seven point four. I've not seen any of the actual written legislation done.
From the county side, that might be a good note for um discussion when we talk about legislative priorities.
Right.
Is including that, supporting that or not, depending on the real.
Think there'll be a lot of support around the state, or there already was, I know a lot of merit applies for it.
Go ahead.
So you use five percent, but then you're talking about four percent. So like, that's a big, that's twenty percent, you know, or thereabouts, right? So.
Yeah. But it's, but it's, but it's not enough to move it up five years.
It isn't?
I mean, well, I mean, look, here's, here's four years, there's no room.
Okay. Right, I get that far.
We're already in red, it's four years. But here, yeah, maybe we can work some of it in, it's probably not the full ninety-one million.
Mm-hmm.
But you know, there's, there's a little bit of gap there, but it's not one percent, I mean, it's not gonna make that.
So.
But there's also inflation on the school project, I'm telling you, there's that, so, yeah, there's a little bit of both sides.
Right. So I just wanna, I understood some of what was being talked about over there, but I didn't understand it all. Uh clearly, there's a phase process to build a school. Can you do a lot of the engineering and early work, like, out of cash flow? Is that possible?
Oh, I think, and.
And the interest that they, yeah, yes.
Andrew was talking about the, the leftover interest from the high school project could possibly be used for engineering, so it sounds fine.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Now, can that be used, like, in in twenty twenty-seven, or does it have to wait to twenty thirty?
No, we could use it now.
Could be used, right, right away.
In or order to be shovel-ready, for example, right, for twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one, everything can be done upfront.
Yeah. Right, you could have your plans ready to go.
Cash flow-wise, and then boom, you 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 get everything going.
You have your plans ready to go and see where we are a year from now, and that's assuming, and I'm not involved for the day-to-day, assuming that you guys are, don't need any more money to finalize the high school over the next couple of months.
So.
See, that's what that money is.
So forth, on time, under right, so forth.
Right, no, that's great, that's great.
So if we get, we can get the six million to start our planning and get everything ready to go in twenty thirty-one and thirty-two, thirty-three, we're only, it's only projected out five years. So everything's gonna be more expensive by then, so.
Was there some inflation built into the?
But also, it's conservatively forecasted, so that's a possibility.
I believe so, yeah, I don't know exactly how long. Five years, I'd say that, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah.
He said five years out, he's got a little bit of that, okay, that's good, that's probably the highlight, it was probably.
He said five years out.
Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah, that's right, that's what I was, yeah.
So a little bit in that.
But you could not do all at once, but layer, you know, as the years, right, okay.
And it's like.
And then like, and now that you push those way out.
Well, I understand, but on an annualized basis, we get an update, and we're like, okay,
Part of the thing.
it it's worth doing the engineering and all the planning to shovel-ready something in two years, you know? Everything's done, everything's ready, we've got the cash flow to be there, you know? And then if we have to push the second school out a little bit, just because we're just, yeah, whatever.
Time, so I think that, I suspect there's some economies of scale with those three schools too. They start on one, those guys get done, they move to the next one, they move to the next one, sort of stairs technique, so depends on.
Yeah. Yeah.
In the meantime, we're pushing Shawlsville and Montgomery County out twenty years.
Maybe, maybe not, we don't know.
There's an easy way to bring them in.
I have to say that this looks a lot better than it used to look, personally.
You know what, it it, I go back to years ago when we were, when we had the Blacksburg High School situation,
Yeah.
we were way above the numbers and we said, we just gotta wait, and you know, unfortunately, time goes very fast and all of a sudden, we're there, and here we are. We did, we were able to do the high school, Christopher High School now, and here we are again, a little bit more time, so.
But really, twenty thirty is the first year, the first fiscal year that we have much capacity to, I mean, for, right?
And that's the year we're talking about issuing to, um with, even even with this, we're basically looking at the fall of twenty thirty.
Right.
So, you know, if we, if if they started today and and a year from now it's FY twenty, or say, we're already in twenty-six tomorrow, I get my head right. If we're, we're FY twenty-seven, ready to start breaking ground, that's three years. What could bring us closer, sales tax would be very, very good.
So six cents on real estate tax would generate seven and a half million dollars immediately. Would that basically pull all this to today for these twenty thirty-two projects?
The revenue we don't have right now.
And our surrounding counties that are a hundred thou, our our surrounding districts that are a hundred thousand people, their tax rates are one oh three, one twenty-two, we're at seventy-six cents. Is there, are there any other hundred thousand districts that are anywhere near seventy-six cents?
You're going out more.
But I mean, do they have fully paid fire and rescue? Do they do sanitation?
Radford City, absolutely.
Right, and that's, didn't we at one point say it was worth fifteen cents or something? So.
Yeah, I mean.
County.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think county does.
Rad, Radford City is eighty-two cents, and they're, what, fifteen thousand people? It's one million, and they're still in.
And they're, and they're starting.
Yeah, I don't think.
And they're still in trouble, they need more money.
And they're starting. They do.
I mean, they.
Right.
Service, I don't know why we're, I'm running on such a.
But, but the tax assessment from Montgomery County is also higher on homes than some of these other counties as well. And that's still tax money, so, and I, the tax rate might be lower, but the houses are a lot higher, so.
It's true.
So what are the, what are the budgets for those counties at those rates?
I think, yes. I know that the city representative generates a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, uh uh, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for one penny, and we generate one point two billion, so, right.
Yeah, Supervisor King, sorry.
If we all remembered at once it was on both boards at the time, when we discussed Christiansburg High School and other projects, that it was gonna be twenty thirty-three before we could borrow any more money, and we all agreed to it. So for us to sit here and figure out how to get tax money in here, that is just not right.
At a minimum, we have to wait until November to see what possibly can happen in next year.
Well, I'm I'm hearing that there, you know, to your point, I I remember that as well. I'm hearing that there are pathways to get some funding before twenty thirty-three, um which is good news. It looks like we might be able to move a little bit earlier. Um and then we think, talking about the referendum, you know, talking about school capital funding through sales tax, it's something for us to discuss, as we said, our legislative priorities, is that something we wanna take to Richmond and advocate for? I don't think we need to decide that tonight. Todd's giving me a look.
Six cents.
I really like Sarah's description there, trying to be shovel-ready, right, so the if and when, we're ready to go. Dr. Bregan, I I don't remember seeing in in the presentations we've gotten, kind of the architectural costs broken out in a way where we could start to look at what that might look like, am I, did we get that? Is that something that we think we could?
We can get that.
Good.
It's between five and six percent is what it was on the board's front, I can't get that exactly, whatever.
It'd be nice to know how much we would need to get shovel-ready, right?
You can phase it, right?
Yeah.
If additional revenue is coming.
And.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that was Jamie's point, right?
Well, to the the question, I guess there's a question mark around the status of the father and gay proposal. Um on the county side, there's also a question mark. The developer has put their application on pause. Um there's some sewer capacity issues that they're trying to work out um to see if they even wanna continue to move forward with the project in its current iteration. They could come back with a totally different project. Um and so I understand wanting to plan for the the largest project, but unfortunately, we don't have any more information about what's happening there either because the developers have paused it temporarily. So that makes it hard to plan for future capacity when nobody knows. The other questions, anybody? Okay, the only item left on our agenda is to adjourn, so if there are no more questions, then this meeting is adjourned. That was unnecessary.